Good evening, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and good evening. This is the call to order for the June, the regular June meeting of the Incorporated Village of Sag Harbor. And we will begin with the motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 9th, 2023. Is there a motion?
I'm over it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, the matter is agreed to. Next up, we're changing the order a little bit tonight to hear the treasurer's report. Somewhere out there in the universe is our treasurer, Tim Bullock. There he is.
So the treasure report for April 2023, the revenues are at 16.7 million. The dock revenue remains up over the prior year by 88,000. The village saw a full year paid parking this current year, so they made 87,000 compared to their last year of 55,000 in the prior year. In the month of May, we already made $5,600 for paid parking. Additional revenue over the budget amounts was due to receiving a grant from New York State for the Long Wharf. We received that in April of 1.5 million, along with additional interest we received throughout the year of 132,000, half of which is going to our reserves. The village also received the county grant for police revenue in April for 178,000. And the Village of North Haven Harbor Master contract, also, they paid that. And we received a donation from Blade for the fireboat of, I believe it was 22,000. Expenses were sitting at 80% of our budget, 15.7 million, compared to the prior year, we were at 13 million. The current month, the village had some large purchases for the mill and the fill along Main Street at $207,000, which half of was paid by PSEJ. And then the village also paid for the equipment down at the docks for $186,000, part of the expansion projects. And that'll be my report for April. Any questions?
Tim, I would just ask you, of the variations year to year, the one that strikes me in terms of revenue falloff continues to be the village court.
Yeah, they're down, I have enough number in front of me, but I know they're down quite a bit. Again, we've talked about it throughout the year, and it's definitely, you're not going to hit their budget, budget amount of, I think, 420,000. They're about 380 right now for the fiscal year. So add another $20,000 for May, potentially 30, so they're still going to come below, you know, their budget amount, but again, it's just ticketed driven and they didn't have those tickets out this, you know, this past summer.
Right, okay, thank you. I'll do the Public Works report. Very busy season, weeks in Public Works. The re-milling and repaving of Jermaine Street following the Peace Egg project was completed, and Suffolk Street extension was fully milled and repaved as well. So these necessary utility projects keep coming through and we keep staying ahead of the work. Public Works stays ahead of it very nicely. We're working on irrigation systems, all being worked on in our park areas, and integrating a schedule for John Steinbeck Park. I noticed the other day that we have 11 irrigation stations in Steinbeck, and a couple of them start right around 5:30 in the afternoon, which is when people tend to wander down to the waterfront. So we're going to change the showering schedule to keep that end of the park a bit drier in the late afternoon. All the antique lampposts on Main Street are being painted. Patching of all roads continue around the village. Cleaning and mulching of all the rain gardens continues, and weeding in various parking areas continues. Streets, the street sweepers are out. I think most of the painting of stop lines has continued, but we're getting to the tail end of that as traffic picks up. And with watering, the flower baskets up on the poles, watering has begun on a regular basis. Dock and Harbor Masters report, our activity in the harbor is dramatically increased, and the rate of arrival that we've seen every year between Memorial Day and 4th of July is coming along unabated. We've had to adjust for some of the transient activity as the dock, the new section of dock is completed, but the, our contractor Chesterfield is targeting the date of June 21. Hopefully, they'll make that, as you can see, almost everything is in place, the bigger equipment is starting to leave. And if they come in on June 21, that'll be within a week of the original schedule, which for Public Works is always a treat when things come in on time. We are using the current dock, current end of transient dock for boaters who've been arriving during the last month. Reservations from now through the summer have been very, very good and very strong. The Harbor Master and his deputies have made 15 marine patrols during the last month. We had one case of coming to the aid of a boat in, having some difficulty. We had a vessel taking on water. We did 20 conservation law checks, and we had one disabled vessel. The pump-out boat, which is available to us through the town of Southampton, has been on-scene for the last month. And we're very happy with the work we've been getting. The fellow Tony, who's been working for the town, but here at our harbor for the last two or three years, has been a terrific asset for the village. The completion of the transient dock is, as I say, targeted for just a week or so from now. It's worth pausing for a moment to consider the amount of public works that have been completed on the waterfront in the last couple of years. Recall that when Long Wharf began as a project, it was going to be somewhere around 2 million, 2,200,000. The project grew with time and scope to in excess of $4 million. We applied to the state for 2,500,000. We got, in the first round back in 2017 or 18, just 550,000. Went back to the state in 2019 and asked, begged, groveled for a million and a half that we didn't get in the first application. And in 2019, we were given that grant. That money finally showed up two months ago. So that's high-speed in New York State grant terms, but we did get the money. So of the Long Wharf project, which has been highly successful, and particularly in the aesthetic improvements on Long Wharf, we did recover the 2,500,000 that we had originally sought. We also, along the way, picked up 270 some odd for the boardwalk, the walkway in Steinbeck Park. We're now on the trail of getting money for the rail to make it safer for the, those who might walk under the bridge and around. And of course, the transient dock financing was made possible by the final arrival of the money from the state that we could reduce our debt profile enough to get this work done. We also did some self-financing of improvements in Marine Park. So I would say Bob has family business here tonight, but that, very proud of our Harbor Master and his entrepreneurial instinct for getting these jobs done. We are, in 2023 at this point, have a year-to-date total of 1,332 in revenues against last year at this time, 1,106, so we're running $170,000 ahead of last year's activity at this nice early point in the season.
Jim, can I just, for a second, the $275,000 for the boardwalk walkway is not assured, just so that everybody's clear. We had to go back to New York State and expand the scope of work because we failed in our NWBE requirements there. So that's a current, ongoing negotiation with the state that we have to fulfill some responsibilities that we've been lax on. So I think to say that that money is assured, it is not.
Well, I'm not sure, I said it was assured, I just mentioned it.
Okay, I just don't want anybody to have a false impression.
There is no such thing as an insured grant until it's actually in the building. There are many, many obstacles on that path as the, as the 2019, 2019 grant, which was assured for four years before it actually showed up. But thank you for that observation. Buildings continues to show a pattern similar to what we had last year, which is the winter months can, can appear to be very erratic, what comes in in terms of the fees that we charge against the various projects. Right now, the total income to the year that we're in, calendar year, is $342,000. And in each of the months, there's been a contrast, sometimes ahead, sometimes behind the months of last year. But the building department continues to be very busy, and code enforcement is out there on a regular basis. That completes, completes those reports, I turned out of the deputy mayor for the police, fire, and ambulance works.
Before you, I have one quick question. We talked about the cost of Long Wharf, what's the cost of the work that's undergoing, that's being undertaken at the moment, the expansion of the docks?
What are we at, 1, 2, 1, 3?
1, 3.
Somewhere in that.
But I can get a full number.
Okay.
The correct number tomorrow, sorry.
No, they said the 21st.
Yeah, we've got another couple of weeks, but the heavy work is done.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Sir Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start off with our police department. The Sag Harbor Village Police Department, for the month of May 2023, answered 820 calls for service. So as you can see, their calls for service are going up, we're starting to get into the summer season. We had four aggravated unlicensed operation. We had two people cited for open containers. We had one disorderly conduct, one suspended registration. We had 13 motor vehicle accidents within the village this past month. We had 10 arrests, we had two DWI arrests, and 110 uniformed traffic tickets were issued. And that concludes the police report. For our fire department, in the month of May 2023, the fire department volunteered for over 1,751 hours. During the month, the officers and members of the department responded to 55 calls for service. These calls included two gas leaks, three motor vehicle accidents, three carbon monoxide incidents. We had one garbage can fire, we had one working structure fire, and three mutually calls to neighboring departments for structure fires. This past month was quite, quite a busy month, as we keep getting closer to the beginning of summer, our calls are on the rise, the chief's calls are increasing. The members continue to train throughout the month on their respective apparatus. And at the end of the month, the members came out and forced march in the Memorial Day parade. So the ambulance, our voluntary ambulance corps, in the month of May 2023, we responded to 55 emergency calls. We had five work nights, two meetings, two training sessions, and one parade, the Memorial Day parade, for a total of 823 man-hours, as opposed to May of 2022, where we had over 1,300 man-hours. So our call volume is down slightly. Let's hope that that trend continues. And that's my reports for the emergency services.
All right, thank you, Tom. Next up, Aiden Corsh, sewer and village grants.
We've started with the sewer. The report for May this year, a total gallons received month of May was 2.045 million gallons. We removed and shipped out 53,000 gallons of sludge, DMR reports forwarded on 6/13. Say, and Suffolk County DHS inspection, next, next inspection is due 7/17. And as always, the de-inspection day is open, they just tend to drop by and say hello. Summary of operations, plant is running well, and we're now using three of the five basins. We had a service call, vehicle control calibrated, calibrated some flow meters in the dissolved oxygen sensors on all the basins, everything checked out okay. The flow increase from April to May was 279,000 gallons. Sad report again this month that on our grease trap inspections, 40% of the restaurants failed. Again, we're introducing legislation tonight that we've been working on for some time to give the village more tools in policing this. It's a, it's a shameful record. Once this, once this legislation is in place, instead of just announcing the number of restaurants, I intend to start naming restaurants because it's the detriment of the entire village when people don't fulfill their responsibilities in emptying the grease traps. It creates havoc with the operations at the, at the plant. And it's a very easy thing to do, you know, you just set it up on a, on a regular schedule. We will get into that a little later when we introduce the law. So 40% failure rate in those restaurants this time. Moving on to grants, we got notification today, I mentioned this last month, but we got official notification, town of East Hampton, for the grant award of $645,863. And that's for area L, and that will be for the connections from the homes to the street. This is great boon for any of the 33 homes over there that we're going to be soaring as this project develops. And so we're very much, would like to express our gratitude to Melissa Winslow, who oversees CPF of the town of East Hampton, and the entire board for, for the generosity in awarding this grant. We had our kickoff meeting this last week to look at grants that are going to be applying for, for the New York State CPF. We're going back to look for grants that we were denied last year. And we're also looking at the Southampton, East Hampton Water Quality CPF, Water Quality Committees. And all of those grants will be due at the end of July. So I hope to have details to share at our July meeting a month from now, but the work is underway to try and pick up where we lost last year and to gain some, some more funding for projects in the village. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Bob Plum, the planning board.
We've, we've been having general informal discussions with the John Shock and some other people, smaller architects and designers about how we're going to move forward with what will be, in essence, a comprehensive plan, but not necessarily a formal comprehensive plan, which would require an outside consultant. Because our feeling is that we need to give the consultants some guidance. It's like telling a boat builder, I want to build me a boat, well, what do you, what do you want? So anyway, the point is to engage the public and try to say, one question is, what are, what are the good things that have happened in the last three years, four years? Or the bad things, you know, to get the sense of the public of where we're going and where we want to go? And take that information, see if it needs to be codified and/or if it needs to be formally reviewed by an outside consultant, which is possible, and a many secret whole thing, but yeah, the general idea is that we want to get the public put first, and then take it from there. And that's.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll report on two things, the Justice Court, as we've already heard, volumes continue to be down, and we will look to follow up with that next month. The police commissioner and I have had conversations about next steps. And we'll hope to see a pickup with this summer, we're already seeing some pickup this summer with vehicle traffic and parking violations, and so revenue should start coming through from that as well. But all areas of frankly, revenues and violations are down across the board in the village. The park board, I think it's been reported in the paper already, the park board and the school have agreed to a one-year contract, again, a license agreement to extend for the 23, 24 school year. And we continue to have conversations with the CPF. And depending on how those goes, we'll continue conversations with the school board on capital improvements for the park as well. I'll keep it brief.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Has there been any input from the school district in terms of long-term planning regarding the use?
Absolutely, that's, that was the ongoing negotiations that were going on between the park and the school for over a year. When CPF came forward, that kind of put that on the hold, and since CPF first negotiated with the school, and now is talking to the park, how that plays out will determine how the school and the park then continue the long-term planning efforts going forward.
All right, no, thank you, any other questions for Ted? Two areas of comment I'd like to just share with you as I head out the door. There's no Washington farewell address to be heard here. You won't hear me on the subject of the military industrial complex or other threats to our existence. The two, the two subjects that have preoccupied me quite a bit in my term, first being affordable housing. One of the things I'm doing in transition with Tom is I'm plowing through piles of files and trying to give a clean cut. For example, I just brought a few other things over tonight. As I look at the affordable housing file, such as we have developed it in these last two years, I find plenty of the sentiment that fed into the court case of not liking the approach that was taken in those three bills. I find almost nothing in what I would describe as a positive vein about what it is people are proposing. And so what I would like to suggest to my colleagues, and it'll be reconfigured, but four of these good-looking fellows up here will be back and with one new face. And I know that they're all committed to picking up on affordable housing early in the new term. That for those who have expressed opposition, those who brought that opposition to court and all of the rest, I think, in looking at the record, I don't see an awful lot about what it is you would propose. And so what I would encourage this next round to be about, not so much anymore about the ideas you didn't like, but what it is you would propose that the village try to do, given its virtual lack of any real, real estate. Like somebody from the North Fork told me, we should be following the example of Kutchog, which are doing a very nice project on six and a half acres of town-owned land. Oh boy, if we had six and a half acres of town-owned land to play with in our village, we'd know what to do with it. So just let us try in this next phase to bring forward now the positive case. What is it that we actually can do? What would you have us do? We did have a lawsuit, it was a relatively narrow strand of the community. We haven't had a comprehensive response from the community. So my parting thought there is, let's try to get it back on the positive and start on a fresh note. The other is to share with you my concerns about the future of John Steinbeck Waterfront Park. The two red brick buildings have a history that's been collateral to the effort to create this park. When I came into the picture, we had about an acre and a half of unused derelict property with a couple of miserable remainders of buildings and so forth. And so the first phase of it all was to articulate an idea to go to CPF, the town, to start the park that you now see. And I feel pretty good, we had a terrific event just a few weeks ago that officially opened it. And I, I came away from that feeling pretty good about what we had done. The two red brick buildings are not our best look in this village, particularly the two Main Streets. There has been an application in the town by the owner of two Main Streets, which includes Capeasa and Cafe Espresso and two other tenants for over a year now. And it has been stalled. They cannot agree on a number, and it is not clear what that outcome will be. There's over $200 million in the CPF fund in the town. So it's not per se a question of money, there's plenty of money. And a lot of things are bubbling up in the village to ask for CPF money. And then a year, there will be a whole new category of CPF money for housing projects, which should figure in the next strategy for affordable housing. The thing that has surprised and not quite shocked me, but bothered me greatly, is that for the two and a half years that Bay Street Theater was focused on the 7-Eleven building, which it acquired in a collateral organization called Friends of Bay Street, never once applied to do anything with that site. There's never been an application from Friends of Bay Street or from Bay Street Theater itself to build anything on that site. The risk to the community now is that the same ownership in Two Main is also in control of the 7-Eleven property. My fear for this village is that having honestly wasted two and a half years on an application that was never made, and the combination of the two properties may well go to market in tandem for commercial development. I would think, we would want to think very hard about whether that's the future we want for our waterfront. There's been recent engagements about two stories, three stories, pedestrian access and so forth. But we are not attuned to the risk that we face. I'll, I'll be stepping away in just a week or two, but I would encourage all of us to take another hard look at those two properties. At the time, we lost the 7-Eleven building to Friends of Bay Street. We had a CPF application by those owners before the town that was withdrawn when the owners sold the property to Friends of Bay Street. So there's a mystery here on why that never advanced. There's a risk here that the properties will combine. And when I talk to commercial real estate interests in the village, the only combination that anybody sees of any real possibility is for commercial use. You can't build condos, you can't build hotels under the new code. So just to raise that as a flag that it should be on everybody's mind that there needs to be a fresh look at what this community would like to do with those properties going forward. I make no bones about it, I'd like to see Two Main become part of the park. I think that opening up downtown would be absolutely transformative. And when we were negotiating and talking about these properties earlier on, we said that we offered in that conversation that the village could take a hand and assure the relocation of any dislocated tenants. So I would just say to you, in my parting thought, to pick up on that effort as well, because it. will really determine the look and feel of downtown for years to come. With that said, I would ask for a motion to accept all of the reports from the treasurer through the department and the mayor's report. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tom. A second?
Second.
Ed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Matters are agreed to. We now have a public comment period confined to the reports that were just made. Yes, sir. Come up, please.
Douglas, you be representative, sir. Just like I said, just all the, the idea of creating the village together and the cooperation is obviously one I think we all welcome. I do want to say something about the petition. It has been clearly viewed as being opposition to affordable housing and one of the petitioners is oppositions to affordable housing. Let's, in that spirit of cooperation, not getting into a legal argument, but that, that was not the issue. And I think all of us, I've spoken to the other petitioners, but we are all strongly in favor of affordable housing. Obviously, one of the challenges in a tiny, geographically tiny community like Sag Harbor is waiting to be seen. And as you say, Kutchog, you know, would be great if we had six acres available somewhere. That obviously just geographically isn't really the case. So that really leads me to the conclusion that the solution is Sag Harbor in conjunction with East Hampton and South Hampton towns, looking at opportunities on the sort of peripheries, like the village such as just in your ideas with the firehouse redevelopment, which also would take pressure off traffic in and out of the heart of the village. And Jaka people will often go out to other places easily. So, but anyway, welcome those thoughts and Kennedy, I probably shouldn't say this at this point, but welcome the amendment to local law, I guess was somewhat of collateral damage to the lawsuit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard? All right, that will close then the public comment period. Nobody on, on the air. Okay, let us go then to introduction. And first up is a local law to amend Village Code twenty-two, twenty-four point four to one of our personally favorite subjects, the grease traps around the village that support our very busy restaurant industry and the this requires an introduction. So who's prepared to introduce?
Sure. So this is, this is a resolution that would set up a public hearing to consider this local law, which is amending a village code section two twenty dash four point four, which is non-compliant waste section E grease trap requirements. It'll set the public hearing for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three at six P M. And this local law amends the grease trap law to basically set up new inspection and maintenance provisions to require that certain inspections and maintenance of grease traps are being conducted. So we don't have any more instructions that hinder or prohibit the sewer from working. It also allows for a section where if there is an obstruction in the sewer that requires an emergency clearing and, and the property owner or operator of the restaurant or food establishment business fails to clear it within seventy-two hours, the superintendent of public works can go in and clear it. However, those charges would be shifted to that property owner. And those are the major differences we're putting in this law.
And we're also asking people to keep a log of all their inspections and all their maintenance. So that when we do our inspections, we can open the log and see every time it has been inspected. So we've never been able to really get full clarity or full visibility on the amount of maintenance that's going on. It's also introducing, right now, the only real tool we have is to, to shut off that premises from the system. And that's not easy to do. There is no valve to shut them off, but this allows us to, to impose fines.
Yes, to impose daily fines as well for non-compliance.
For non-compliance. So I think with this, with these tools, we hope, I hope we never have to write a ticket or ever have to find anybody. We just want people to fulfill their responsibilities and take care of the grease traps. It's really important. I understand that when something goes down the drain, people forget about it. But other people have to deal with it and it's to the detriment of the entire village and ultimately our water quality that we all share. That the, that all of these premises have a responsibility.
So we're also sending out a best practice, a best management practices for fact sheet along with a letter to all of the food establishment places in the village so that they're aware of this local law and aware of best management practices to prevent grease traps from getting clogged in the future, hopefully at trustee Corsh's request.
So hopefully we'll have better news reports as time goes by. Thank you.
You, you think that the restaurant owners would be aware if their sewer plugged up, it's going to shut them down. It's their own business.
And that's the bigger penalty.
Probably.
Because if they lose a couple of days.
Yeah.
For seventy-two hours.
That's bigger than any penalty we have.
But there's two aspects to this. There's the actual blocking of the pipe and then there's the outflow of grease that just, and fats and oils that just makes its way through the system. And it sort of coats the system like your arteries get coated and eventually we have to rotor root them out. It's really expensive. There'll also be a requirement that after blockage that the property owner has to pay to get the lines camered so that we can get a video of the camera going through the lines. So we know that the line from whatever, whatever the establishment is, is now clear. So it's trying to bring some order to what has been a fairly loose arrangement of trust since the seventies. And unfortunately, it's just not working for us anymore. The use has gone off. The amount of volume that we're accepting is a lot more than it was in the beginning. And so all of these things combined, I mean, we need, we just need better oversight. So hopefully this will give us the tools to do it and hopefully we'll never have to use those tools. Thanks.
So do we need a motion?
To, yes.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to introduce.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to. And does that include the scheduling of the public hearing? That's in that motion. So, and that would take place thirty days from now.
July, July.
July meeting. Okay. All right. So the matter is agreed to. Next up is a local law to amend Village Code three hundred thirteen four to designate Steinbeck property at Two Bluff Point Lane, a landmark in the village of Sag Harbor. Now, this is the Steinbeck home that has officially opened in the last thirty days or so. And the one question I had as this came forward is, I've looked at the list of the landmarks that we have in the village. It's pretty impressive. The hotel, the Core Maria Customs House, Hannibal French House, the library, now the cinema, the Whalers Church, forty-eight Madison, and some others are missing. So what does the conferring of landmark status on a property mean to the property? In this case, this is a property that's still zoned or R twenty residential. So what is, what is this significance other than the attention it might bring to giving this status?
So in chapter, in the Board of Historic Preservation and Architectural Review section of the code, which is three hundred dash thirteen, it's article thirteen of your village code, there are heightened review and requirements for any landmarks. It just, it's essentially requires preservation. And here the, you have to add the specific structure or property to the code. Here they're adding John Steinbeck House structures and property for Two, Two Bluff Point Lane to the code as a landmark. And that's so, there's an actual list, which I can, I can send to you of heightened review that would be required for any landmark review or any, any amendment to landmark property.
So essentially it's meant to be a protective device.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody here to be heard on this?
This would set the public hearing to consider this amendment to the code on July eleventh as well.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to introduce it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the public hearing is thus open. Do we invite anybody here to be heard on this? At this point?
Is that an introduction?
Yes.
Yeah, that's just an introduction, a public hearing.
And the matter's been agreed to or is it?
Introduced.
Introduced. Next up, a public hearing, a continuing public hearing, oh no, a new public hearing on Village Code three hundred eleven point six. This relates to the accessory apartments in Village Code legislation that we did as part of the three-part introduction last summer. And this is meant to retain the ADU portions of the overall plan, but to decouple it from the two other statutes or local laws that were nullified via the law case. So this is
On for adoption.
This is on for adoption as we discussed.
Public hearing, so.
So I would invite the, do we have to open the hearing? Yes. It's open. Okay. Continue. Okay. Anybody have any, like to be heard on this? Anybody in the public?
Cabling this again.
Not this one.
No, this is to do, this is some house cleaning.
This is the accessory.
Yeah.
This is just, just decoupling it basically. Okay.
No, I'm
So
I'll make the motion to adopt it.
Well, we'd have to close the public.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Would hear a motion now to adopt.
I'll make the motion.
Tom, although the second?
I'll second.
Aiden, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is adopted. Thank you. Next up, a continued public hearing on local law, chapter two fifteen. This is the seasonal use dwelling unit registry to create a rental permit registry for the village of Sag Harbor. And this is a continued public hearing, so the matter is open. And the history here is we've struggled through a lot of examination of how this is done in a lot of other places. I for one, but I think my colleagues as well, as we went wanted to have a regulatory process that could work without having to create a vast bureaucracy to make it work. And I think we've come a long way and I would ask anybody that wants to be heard on this tonight to be heard at this point. My colleagues?
Somebody's hands. The heck comes Val?
Val?
Yeah.
Sure, Val. Yes, please. Because I know you're famous, we need to put you on the record.
So I think the, it's a good word that's being done in terms of rental registry.
Just speak up, Val. Val Florio.
Yes. So the rental registry makes records to safety, of course. We're looking at smoke, CO detectors and the list goes on depending on which municipality you work with. There's electrical, there's egress, there's pool, safety. There's also the units of laws as well as maintenance of your property and amount of vehicles which can car. The important distinction with Sag Harbor, this is a nationally recognized historic district. So the thing that makes it different is we've got homes here which have been constructed prior to the inception of the car. Mostly very old homes which can escape National Fire Prevention Association's requirements. Who was using egress in us in a new home, five point seven square feet is the standard. And it's not so much egress, but it's ingress for avoiding engaged firefighter to make it inside structure. We don't have that here because discretion across the country for the historic home is you do not need to make every home comply with that standard. So what I'd want to do is further consideration in terms of an inspection, the, the suggestion is that an architect, engineer or licensed home inspector can make that inspection. However, in looking at the images which I've provided to you tonight, I can go one by one and state why as an architect, but would not feel comfortable doing this. Mostly because of the situation with inability for the occupant to escape the structure. These are examples which I won't name location, but in throughout the village, we, as I said, were historic homes. A lot of the interior, as you can see on the third slide, has an exposed structure. There's a structure fired in this house, floors on the second floor is immediately impacted. Smoke detector may go off, but if you look at the fourth slide, by an illegal attic bedroom, it's got a smoke detector in that bedroom. If, if a building inspector proves a house with a certificate of occupancy, he's readily not looking for beds. This could slide through very easily, whereas a home inspector could do that job much better versus an architect or an engineer. Only inspector with a checklist, proper checklist can write danger on everything that they identify as being something problematic. Whereas most people, building inspector won't write danger. Or an architect might say, well, this is allowable by the code, but it will not identify this as being something that's acceptable, less than five point seven square feet. So I think that's an important distinction in terms of the acceptability of the report, the checklist from the tenant's South Hampton, as I said, covers again, in terms of the basics. But the things that are missing, consideration for an old home, the structure, the fireplace, also the stairs. A lot of these houses have non-compliant stairs. So in terms of the standard which we go by, modern standard, you cannot apply that to an older home. So I think it's doing good work, but it can be better. This could be the standard throughout this region in terms of older houses. If I want to go rent a car, it's like nineteen thirty. It's not going to have seat belts, it's not going to have airbags, it's not going to have tempered glass, safety features which are common. Let's say everyone who drove to this meeting tonight came here in a car presumably less than or in the range of twenty years old, maybe thirty. And here we are renting or potentially giving approval for people to live in a house that's over a hundred, some as old as a hundred and fifty years.
So Val, just bear down on the key point here is that you would have us put as a question, would you have us require that the inspections that we're trying to build in here be conducted only by a certain class of qualified inspector?
Why since home inspector?
And the, and that would be, and your judgment, superior to an architect or other bill, who, others who might be qualified on other matters?
Why since home inspector takes an infrared camera throughout the house? Why since home inspector inspects every junction box to make sure they're working electrical outlets? So this goes beyond the basic. If you look at the South Hampton Village Registry, it will have smoke detectors and CO. That the occupant has read the code, the homeowner has read the code done. But that takes it to a minimal level of safety. Kind of feel that this can mean.
What do you do with the, with, considering all the homes we know and love in the village are to a large extent pre-existing non-conforming? So what's the solution or what's, how do you resolve that impasse? When you say that they're, they don't meet modern standards, are you saying that we ought not, that people who own old homes ought not be able to rent them?
Yes. If.
But should they be living in them then?
No, if the, if they're given something for the tenant to say danger, then they know. As I said, with the analogy of the car, if I rented you a model C car. And I said, you need to pump the brakes five times before it come to a full stop. The homeowner knows the limitations of their house to some degree. They know safety features, they might have, okay, don't use the fireplace. Have a fire extinguisher. Things that.
But could we separate things that would pass the C O and things that wouldn't? Like you can have an old house in this village. Where the, you know, you, you look at, I'm not talking about the attic, but just the size of windows maybe, or the fact that there's no. Fire break on the ceiling, that would all, that would all get a C O under our current rule.
Discretion across the country is that standard is acceptable for an historic home. Do not need to meet modern standards because you will change the character.
Right, you have to rebuild, well, none of these homes. I mean renovated homes have been rewired, replumbed and have been completely rebuilt.
Correct.
They still might not pass the egress. Portion of, they won't.
They won't.
So. Are you suggesting then that? Even though the whole house is up to code, has a current C O that could have been issued yesterday? That it should not be allowed to be rented because of the size of the windows?
Caution. Because if you're, if the village is given limitation or liability. The homeowner and the tenant have agreed that they've identified the. Safety home or not so safe. But the fact, the matter is that I can go onto any website, do an internet search for rentals. And come across a basement bedroom that perfectly acceptable by the homeowner to take that risk. However, they're renting it to someone who thinks it's perfectly fine. So that's the distinction. The homeowner bears the risk, knows the challenges and say, look, I'm not going to set up beds in the basement. I know. Means of egress. But a tenant might not know.
Sure, I understand, right?
So that identification is.
So it's more of a full disclosure.
Checklist is something where at the very end of that checklist. Inspector can say. These are the items that raise cause for concerns. Done. That's all. And that.
So you would, you would amend. What we have drafted here to require that the. Primary work of inspection be done by licensed. Inspectors.
Correct.
Home inspectors.
An engineer can be a licensed home inspector. An architect can be a licensed home inspector as well. But there's a different standard for a licensed home inspector. Who might go through that house with equipment, which I don't have, I'm permitted to do them by law as an architect. But I don't have infrared cameras.
No, I get it, I get that. So I'm just, in terms of how we would further perfect this draft. That we would elevate the licensed home inspector. To the highest level of. Importance in this regulatory scheme. Whether that person is also an architect or a builder or whatever. Is the licensing, I believe, is, would be by the state?
It is.
It is by the state of New York.
Certified home inspector.
Right.
And what would they be certifying exactly?
That's a good point because the checklist needs to be, I think, fleshed out in terms of what processes are you asking them to check?
You're kind of working along the lines of assumption of risk, right? You're kind of saying to people, making them aware that these conditions exist. Is that right?
That's right. Then the house has old wiring, the house has.
So that's right, it, it's not to say to the homeowner, your house is safe, you shouldn't, unsafely, you should not live here. But the fact is you're getting full disclosure to potential occupant. This house could have issues. It's got a basement bedroom not to be used, it's got an attic bedroom not to be used. These are things that won't readily be picked up on by a generic checklist.
But there's habitable, and then there's. Sleeping is, is the breaking point, right? Where there's habitable, non-habitable, and then there's another one, usable or something. Some kids could play in this attic during the day. Sleep there at night.
Yeah, but to. One of these slides which shows the finished attic, so a lot by fire code.
Yeah.
N F P regulations, N F P A, National Fire Prevention Association. If you finish any floors of the second floor, the entire home needs to be sprinkled with ice. So it's important. A home inspector where I gathered much information went to a home built in the eighteen forties. Each window which was told to be preserved by the Architectural Review Board. Had a glass, plexiglass cover on the outside to preserve the integrity of the look of the building. Every one of them painted shut. Not a window in the house that could be opened by a child or an adult that raises concern. But if you don't have that on the checklist for a historic home. That's why I'm saying do better, do better than the basic. And I think this village can be the standard for that across this region in terms of historic structure, that's all.
Okay.
Well, remember where we started out with this law? Was that the building inspector was going to go into these rental properties and make sure that the whole, that the. The residence was up to code, that it met all the standards of the code. Am I correct?
But then we, the law does say that you have to give them an option, you can't just. Mandatory require inspections due to the search and seizure laws of the, of the state. So you have to allow for an option of the property owner to either provide a home inspector, an architect or engineer, that's every other code that says that. And in this case, you're allowing the property owner himself or herself to also authorize that checklist.
I mean, I, I get Val's point and I'm sympathetic to what you're saying that. You know, if you're renting a house, you should be aware, this house, you know, the last time it was renovated was. Nineteen sixty or nineteen seventy, this house predates. The, the local codes and is pre-existing non-conforming, may have balloon framing. It may have windows of egress that are not up to standards. That sort of type of disclaimer, so to speak, will make, make the tenants aware. Of the place that they're renting and what the, what the hazards could be. But you're saying the only person that could officially do that is a home inspector, licensed home inspector.
Well, you bring, in my opinion, the, any municipality will bring down liability on themselves. If a building inspector has the discretion according to preservation code to say the window can be twenty inches by twenty-two inches, which is less than the standard. What if there's a fire? And that building inspector has approved the home. Whereas the inspection checklist can make distinction and say there is danger here. And you acknowledge, so that's all.
Right.
It's just to bring it to a standard because otherwise what's the point? You know, i- if there was a horrible event like a fire and someone loses his life. Well, we allow them to have smoke detectors and C O is our standard, which is kind of a village of South Hampton. Most of their checklist, aside from the things that I said outside, maintaining your lawn, making sure garbage is taken care of, making sure cars are not, you don't have a, the abundance of vehicles. So it's safety, it's just about safety.
This, this, the law that we're proposing is not going to be enacted until twenty-four. Yeah.
January of twenty-four.
We have some time, yeah.
So there's time, there's time to do that, but there are generic local checklists. And there's checklists all over this country in historic districts by shots. Here in the village of South Hampton or town of South Hampton has a basic standard. But we have distinction with the historic home, which they don't have. Like I said, if we all drove here tonight in a car made in the nineteen nineties or two thousands, a car is safe and it goes through a safety inspection. Car built in eighteen whatever. You don't rent that car without some precautionary aid.
So you're really talking about full disclosure to a renter for somebody who's coming into your house sight unseen.
Right.
And they're depending on you and your.
The, the principle is assumption of risk, same thing where it says that at the beach, no lifeguards on duty, swim at your own risk. That's kind of what it's saying.
Because one of the things you were trying to avoid was the village assuming.
Right.
It sounds more explicit than that, though it's not just a general waiver of liability or assuming a risk of liability. You're asking for an explicit disclosure of every dangerous condition. I've seen those, yeah, and I've seen those reports. When you buy a house, the home inspector goes through, you get a list of everything that could be, we've all gone, anybody that's bought a house, so you've seen that.
It's actually well played in these.
It is, they just fill in.
That's more, that's what you're suggesting.
It's a degree of expertise which you will get from a certified home inspector who specializes in this, so that's all. You know, take it to another standard.
I mean, he's really disclosed, the home inspector here she will be disclosing these issues, they're not making any warranties one way or the other. It's just to get the information into a document that's available for a home renter to read.
Why don't we do this?
I think it's worth more conversation, sorry.
This is an open process, let's leave it open. And continue, but this has been very valuable input. Val, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Cash, do you have somebody? Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. My name is Mark Willis. I have a house in. And as a rest. And I wanted to ask a question about the fourteen day, two times a year rule. Was there any analysis done? By. Sag Harbor on. The percentage of rentals that are currently under fourteen days in Sag Harbor? I'm sure both V R B O and Airbnb can provide that type of information. And what effect it would have on the local businesses there? And the reason. The reason I ask that is because I would say about ninety-five percent. Of my inquiries. That I get when I'm renting my house. Probably at least ninety-five percent are for less than two weeks, seven days, ten days. But I, I just want to know if there was analysis done on how that would affect the businesses in Sag Harbor? Because it, it would appear to me that the people who are tourists in Sag Harbor spends a. Will spend a disproportionate amount of money per day while they're here.
Well, sir, I, I don't know if my memory is good on this, but. At least three or four years ago, when we. Made an attempt to regulate the B N Bs and the V R Bo's. Terms of knowing what was going on, the organizations, and there was another name before V R B O, I can't think of it.
HomeAway.
HomeAway.
Yeah.
The, those companies were not keen on telling a community like ours what the level of activity was. Because I think they read it that we were trying to regulate and so forth. So we, to the extent you say, is there any analysis? We don't have a particular ability to measure that activity. And the people that are the clearinghouses for these were not keen to provide it.
That, that's already in the code, that was, that's not changing, that's a provision that's been in the code for several years now.
Right.
That's actually something maybe hasn't been enforced, it, it should have been, but it's definitely something that's been in the code.
But we don't have an ability to measure. The actual activity.
No.
Yeah, that's what I think the question.
The neighbors unfortunately, and then you have to run out your neighbors, probably.
But thank you for that, sir.
Yeah, I think if you, if you, if you just survey people that you know who use these services. And just ask the question, they can give you a sense of what percentage of their renters or inquiries are coming in at two weeks or more. And I think you'd be shocked at what you'll find. In terms of, because I would say it's at least twenty to one, under two weeks, at least twenty to one. So, and I think, and I think that will be universal for those folks. Well, the two thousand people in the Hamptons are plus that use V R B O and probably even more than that to use Airbnb. But if you just, if you just take a brief survey. You could do it anonymous or any way you want. I, I would think you'd be surprised at. The, and I, and I would say the overwhelming majority of people are looking for one week. They, they want to come out here, they want to come out here for a vacation. They, and they, they're looking for one week. And of course you have those people that want the whole season. But I, I think it's overwhelming in terms of. What you'll find in terms of the terms that the people that are actually visiting your, your restaurants and your stores and your shops. How long have, ha, are they staying in the area? I think you'd be shocked. And I think it's a, a big. A big, well, the, the, the whole thing about it is nobody even knew that rule was in the code because it was never enforced. Right? And so I don't think that the, the community has felt the impact of that particular rule. But like, that's why I just want to share with you, I was just curious if that analysis was done.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and we have another. Drive safe.
I'm, I'm, I'm in the passenger seat.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Tal Litvin, I have a follow-up question to Val Florio. I thought your comments were very interesting, I just was thinking about. When you guys are drafting the rules, I mean, how frequently are you expecting? A home to be inspected? I mean, that will be, you know, pretty cumbersome and expensive for people. From my past experiences, most home inspections start around five, six hundred dollars, so I think people will, you know, consider that. A hurdle to doing business in the village, and I would just, you know, caution you guys on. How frequently you're going to make them, you know, revisit a home inspection?
I was thinking about, I thought exactly when this was, discussion was happening is. But do you want to make it every five years or if there's a, when was the last C O issue?
Yeah, there's a lot for us to consider and unpack with what Val brought to the table tonight, and I think you make a very good point. I don't think homes are going to change that much from one year to the next, so is ten years too long, probably is one year too short, yes?
Two years.
So we'll, we'll have to find a Sag Harbor solution to that question.
I was only one dead.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tal. Anyone else? All right, yes, Nada, please.
I have, I'll be honest, I haven't read the whole code, at least originally I glanced when it first came out. But I'm going to be almost talking about two different things here, we're talking about people who went permanently or living here and so on. And then we're talking, there's another thing, the tourists who come into the area, which do support us a lot, which is your A B. Your Bell B and B, HomeAway, whatever. So it almost got two different things to deal with.
Yeah. We do have on the law right now, on the books right now, that you can't rent for less than two weeks, only for certain.
Two times a year.
Two times a year. And I think it comes down to quality.
Thirty days.
Thirty days, it's quality of life for neighborhoods, we don't want. Thirty days. It's quality of life for neighborhoods. We don't want people, houses turning over every week or every weekend. I mean, every weekend means that, like, every Friday's party night because everyone's riding. So I think it was decided when this law was first introduced that two weeks, twice a year seems reasonable. I mean, it's very hard to draw hard lines around this stuff.
But what about the people though who already updated, there are only a couple in the village, so that they could do Airbnb?
Well, you talk about running.
Came up before.
Bed and breakfast. You're talking about Airbnb bed and breakfast for the owner of the home remains in place.
Yeah, well, it's still a rental situation.
Yes, but it's under a different set of rules. Yeah, it's a difference as opposed to just renting your house.
The towns used the BB, those websites as evidence.
Right.
Of illegal rentals based on the terms, so they use it for enforcement.
I'm confused, but there's no exception of use.
There's no exception if you are living in the house.
That's the BNB.
That's the BNB, yeah.
That's a special permit. No, no, to a bed and breakfast, right? Where you're renting just a room.
Yeah.
And you have breakfast, like a typical standard.
So now you're, you're, you're like a hotel.
You have to meet certain standards for that.
I make a motion, we keep this open until next month. Yeah. I'll second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the the dwelling unit registry remains open. Next up, a local law to create Village Code three hundred nine dash one one land clearing regulations. This is also a continuing public hearing. And I will tell you that we've had a very thoughtful letter, he could not be here tonight, from our great friend Ed Hollander asking for consideration for some features of what we're trying to write here in the local law. And Tom and I and a consultant that's been involved are scheduled to meet, I believe, on Monday. First thing on Monday to hear Ed out on this. So on that strength alone, I think we ought to remain open.
You have a meeting on Tuesday, on Wednesday.
Fred Hoffman from Barlet Trees is meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
He can't go.
Oh, yes, I believe Ed is coming as well.
Right.
Based on your email.
Right.
Oh, so there's two meetings?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
And Ed changed his forty minutes.
Okay, excellent. Well then. Suppose the stay open is doubled.
Yeah.
We have two meetings.
I'll make that motion.
So let us continue.
I think the big concern is that we, that we enforce it properly, that we have somebody who's a professional. Yeah, right. That can advise the ARB and.
If we can just say, this is another one we're going to put over, that Ed's big concern was that not have the ARB as the arbitrator of whether or not a tree should be taken down, that somebody who has more expertise in trees.
Tricks of the trade.
And the broader question of identifying a native and non-native and all that. I do want to say to the principal advocates, Eileen and Jane and others, that we are continuing the process. I know there's anxiousness to get to a place, but I think what Ed has raised here, we should pick it, pick it up from there. So we remain, public hearing remains open. At least for these meetings, these two meetings that are coming. All right, you want to move that?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
A second?
Second.
Okay. We all agree to keep the
Yes.
The hearing open.
I I would say we're very close on this. We just want to. Yeah.
Yeah, we are close, closer. Close, closest, closest.
Right, we'll see what comes out of the meetings next week.
Okay, moving on then to action items. D Yardley Superintendent of Public Works recommends that Quack and Bush Cecil Inc. be awarded the sewer sledge hauling contract. They've been with us for many years for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Second.
I'll say.
Okay, Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Superintendent Yardley recommends that Winter Brothers be awarded the garbage contract for the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four year. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Next up, D Yardley recommends that Ray Smith and associate, associates be awarded the tree trimming contract for the twenty-three, three, twenty-four year. Is there a motion?
Some would.
Aiden, is there a second?
Second.
Ed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number four, Carrie Garapie, Secretary to the Ambulance Corps, requests to hire Jade Andraki, if I said that right, and Bruce Foneska as on-call EMT paramedics effective June thirteen at the rate of thirty-seven dollars an hour. She also requests to remove paramedic Nicholas Calaci.
Kalachi.
Kalachi from payroll as well as insurance rolls effective May seventeen. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I know all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Chief McGuire of Sag Harbor Police requests the authorization to rehire Leila Mojeski as traffic control officer at the rate of eighteen dollars per hour retroactive to May twentieth.
I'll make the motion. I'll say, did they start on May twentieth? Okay.
Now, this is a rehire, so this is a young woman who's been with us before.
Yes, yeah. She has experience.
Right. Okay, is there a motion?
I made the motion.
Motion, Tom, second.
Second.
Aiden, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number six, Robert Bory, Harbor Master recommends that Environmental Services be awarded the pumping of marine waste contract for the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
The second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number seven, motion to adopt Juneteenth as an official holiday of the village of Sag Harbor for one year. And that limitation is because we have a need to coordinate with our labor contracts in the creation of an additional holiday.
I'll make the motion.
Second. And all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Number eight, to accept the resignation of Charles Broadmeadow, who is at the sewage treatment plant. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I would ask you, this is always a tight matter, won't we?
It is. So Charles resigned once before and then changed his mind and came back. So now he's going to leave in the middle of July. And we are actively pursuing more help down there. Dee had some, I think, success this week with the younger Tom Gerdella who came by. But we need to look at being able to attract more people down there. And, you know, by maybe using some sort of bonus payment or something to get people to come in. It's almost impossible, and it's not just us. It's, it, it's every other sewage treatment plant in the areas just have.
In the country.
In the country.
Yeah, it's a tough job.
Companies that do this.
One of the issues that we need someone local, because when alarms go off, we need people to be able to respond at two AM, three AM. You know, part of the longer term process would be to upgrade the systems of the plant. And that's, that's like the five year conversation so that a lot of the stuff could be automated. But for now, we need to replace Charles. We're working on.
Okay, but so we've, motion was to accept.
Yeah.
The resignation, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, matter is agreed to. Sean Elliott, the Sailing Director of Breakwater Yacht Club, requests permission to use a portion of the vacant lot located forty-five Bay Street for winter storage. I'll come back to that.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Just to remind, this is a piece of property just south of the Breakwater Yacht Club and west of the Sag Harbor Yacht Yard that for many years was leased to the yacht yard. That arrangement ended some years ago. Breakwater had then stepped in and was the principal Lassie. Last year, I agreed, agreed to allow the property to be re-divided between the yacht club and the yacht yard. That arrangement did not work out. So this is basically to return the second half of the yard back to the Breakwater. And we will do that by amendment to the leases that we have with Breakwater for, we have ground lease for their property. We're also working on extending their leases on the so-called dinghy dock. So I would move this item. Number ten, is there a second?
Second.
Ed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. We're going to go backwards now to item nine, somebody skipped over, I don't know who, to increase the hourly rates for EMT and paramedics.
Yeah, so we're going from twenty-six for the basic EMT to twenty-seven dollars an hour. And for the paramedic CC, we're going from thirty-six to thirty-seven. Again, same situation. It's hard to find people and we're in competition with.
And that's your.
That's my, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. A resolution at number eleven, authorizing issuance bond to finance acquisition of a pumper fire truck, which we've talked about.
This is the aerial ladder that we've discussed. This is the best way that, and I guess the cheapest way that we can do this interest wise. So.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Richard Scavoni, Secretary of the Fire Department, requests the, accept the resignation of Max Miller in good standing and remove him from the insurance role.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Secretary Scavoni requests to accept the applications of Laura Anderson and Debbie Kleinsmith to the ladies auxiliary and to place their names on the insurance rolls for the Sag Harbor Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary.
I'll make the motion.
Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Harbor Master Bory requests to increase Pierre De Plessis' salary from sixteen fifty to eighteen dollars per hour. I'll make that motion. Is there a second? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Can we just do a roll call vote on the bond resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
On the pumper truck?
Yes.
Okay, let's just finish this one. This is Plessy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the matter is agreed to. Yes, the code requires that bond.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Take a roll call vote, so let's go back there. And to item number eleven. And I'll move the item. Is there a second?
Do we have to?
Do we have to rescind first?
Aiden motioned, Tom seconded, so, and then I'll just do the roll call for.
Okay, all right, proceed.
Mayor LaRaca.
Technically, we should rescind the prior resolution, so just make a motion to rescind the prior resolution.
I moved it to rescind it.
Yeah.
I moved it.
Second.
Second.
Second, Ed.
Sorry.
All those in favor of rescission?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you're getting a motion.
Now. I will move the issuance of a bond to finance acquisition of the pumper fire truck. Is there a second?
No. I'll second.
God, can we please get this ladder? Second.
They're just doing this to torture the future mayor.
I'm going to get hung in the firehouse, you know that, right?
Mayor LaRaca.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gardella.
Yes.
Trustee, hey?
Yes.
Trustee, of course?
Yes.
Trustee, Pam?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those are in agreement, the matter is agreed to, and we will all be invited to the hanging.
From the ladder truck.
From the ladder truck, fully extended.
I hope we get to the third story. Yes.
Okay, let me take care of Mr. Scavoni, Mr. Scavoni. So we're up to Bob, we did that. Okay, next up, number fifteen, amending the transient dock route rates to include jet skis.
I have a question. Are we encouraged, oh, jet ski is normally part of our activities?
Well, they're, they're in the harbor.
They're considered under the code, they are considered a vessel.
Right.
Personal, they're considered, defined as personal watercraft, which is included in the definition of vessel. So they are technically regulated by the chapter two seventy.
There's some minimum distance for that?
I don't know, you'd have to talk to the harbor master about.
This is going to be on Long Wharf, we're going to have jet skis off Long Wharf.
So it's thirty dollars for the, for our three hour periods. So the first three hours is thirty dollars, the second three hours is another thirty dollars.
What happens if a jet ski shows up today, what's the current situation?
They dock, but there's no fee. So there, there hasn't been a fee that's listed. So this is a recommendation off of Harbor Master Bory that there's been an up, like an increased level of jet skis coming in and docking at the transient dock. And he recommended that if, with this uptick, that we start charging a fee.
The fees, I mean, the nuisance of those machines, in my opinion, that way any money would get.
But the question, I guess, is, is there any concern that authorizing a fee would encourage more jet skis?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Would encourage, how?
I don't know.
It, it, it legalized to some extent.
What, the whole thing of this jet ski, if someone comes in on a jet ski and needs to go to the bathroom, they're going to have to pay, they're not going to have money in their pocket necessarily while they're out on the jet ski. I'm very confused where you're coming from. What's going on?
Do we, do we know how many?
Can we not have a conversation? With, with the attendees?
We haven't opened to public comment here. We're I would tell you that the jet ski issue is in every harbor in the Northeast. And what, what might have been a jet ski twenty years ago is a rather modest little platform with a motor on it. These new ones have two and three seats. They have storage, they carry their wallets, they carry their, all kinds of stuff. So I think the thinking that Bob had here is they're with us. Unless we want to open a discussion of outlawing them and we get into a lot of complications, which is that we can legislate within our own boundaries, but we also subject to some of these governing statutes.
My question would be that if we did charge them, we were semi allowing them.
Well, I'm sure I follow that because if they're coming anyway.
I think you'd have to.
We might.
Legislation to prohibit them. That's different, right?
Do we have any idea how many, I mean, I haven't had no complaints about jet skis here, but I just, is this, are we opening a little Pandora's box by suddenly acknowledging their existence and charging for them and then?
I think if they're here.
They're here.
I think if they're here, we should charge for them.
I.
Maybe the fee should be more than thirty dollars. I mean.
We, that's not set here, though, right?
It is, it's set by this resolution. It's thirty dollars for every three hour period. So the first three hours is thirty, then the next, then it goes over at sixty. And then the next three hours is sixty, and then another three hours would be ninety, right?
And for some reason, it ended up being something we didn't want, we could all just.
You have to look.
We could change the.
Yeah. Could change regulation. Do we have any idea of the number of jet skis that come in? I know we talked about it in the, in the abstract that Bob would have.
They are.
Well, we don't, because we were asked now to, to count other of the vessels. Other than parking somebody on the end of the, the breakwater, we really don't have capacity for, for counting them. Keeping track of which color is which and all of that.
But if you charge it, well, I guess.
If you charge it, we'll probably get a much better idea.
Which could be the first step.
So let's do this for a year and see how it goes.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Nada, do you want to be heard?
Something you want to say?
That's the only way we can find out, but, you know.
I feel one laugh, see how it goes.
Okay, next issue?
Yeah.
At least people laugh.
It's good.
They're happy.
Next up, number sixteen is an amendment of the hourly rate for the harbor master. The background here is that the harbor master is paid as an hourly rate and some recent change in state law allows us to go a little. the harbor master is paid as an hourly rate, and some recent change in state law allows us to go a little higher than we have been going. And so I would move this resolution at number 16.
All this last time, or before we.
There's been two raises in recent times. They're eventually, they're eventually going to, by the end of this year, Bob will be out from under that restriction. Because of his age. It's a very peculiar feature of integrating state retirement plans to local government.
I'm, I'll second. You move it, I'll second.
And the rate is $45 an hour?
That's the new rate.
New rate is 45?
Yep.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter is agreed to. Chief McGuire requests to hire Will Schmitz as traffic control officer at the pay rate of $17 an hour effective June 14, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Tom, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is agreed to. Next up, number 18, Chief McGuire requests to hire Cynthia Richards as a paid intern at the police department at the rate of $20 per hour.
Make the motion.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter is agreed to. Alan Degardi of the Sag Harbor Chamber of Commerce requests authorization to hold the Arts and Crafts Fair at Marine Park on June 17, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, June 18, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Also requesting to play, place appropriate signage on the grassy area. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Tom, is there any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter is agreed to. Next up, the Sag Harbor Historical Society requests to have their annual fundraising, Keeping History Alive, on Saturday, July 1, 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Custom House, 192 Main Street, as well as a sign on the property. This is, this is.
I'll second.
This is also the night of the fireworks, of course, several hours later. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter is agreed to. Number 21. Nicholas Sloan of 53 Glover Street requests to have a summer party for family and friends on Saturday, August 12, from 6:00 to 11:00 PM.
I just have one question on this. We don't usually, because this is in a residential area, we don't usually go to 11:00 PM. Usually, we usually try to keep it to 10:00 PM.
I don't know, is there anything on the book?
I think it's at the discretion of the board, in chapter.
It's just a.
Chapter 33, real quick, I had it up at four.
I know it's a practice that we've you know, it's just a practice that we've done in the past.
So would you, would you want to hold it till 10:00 on this item?
I would say until 10:00 PM.
Okay.
If that's, if that's keeping with their.
Yeah, that's usually.
It's discretion of the time.
The carnival, we kept till from 5:00 to 10:00 because we want to, it's in a residential area.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Okay, so is there a motion to amend?
I'll make the motion.
The amended.
I'll move that it's approved, and I'll move it until 10:00 PM.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to, as amended to 10:00 PM. Next up, Stephen Novak, on behalf of the Sag Harbor Yacht Club, advises they will hold their annual fireworks show on Saturday, July 1, beginning at 9:30 PM.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Michael Chung of Harbor Hills Improvement Association requests permission to have a Labor Day block party on Saturday, September 2, from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Nineveh Place, pending insurance.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ed, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter is agreed to. And right next door, Robin Brown of Eastville Community Historic Society requests permission to have the following event at the Eastville Heritage House, 139 Hampton Street. I don't see the date on here. Well, we've already had that.
We've had that. Exhibition, July 1. This is multiple events.
Yes, it's multiple.
These are the various parts of it. Okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
A matter is approved. Next up, number 25, Richard Doctorow of the Sag Harbor Whaling Museum and Historical Museum requests to have calm before the storm party on Saturday, June 24. He also requests to place a banner on the fence from June 10 to June 24.
Do you have a time for that party, seeing as we have?
I don't know. The app, the application is.
It's still consistent.
Five to seven.
Okay.
There's a usually garden.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, it's either the clam before the storm or the calm before the storm.
I'll make that motion.
Aiden, is there a second? Tom, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The matter is agreed to. Next up, motions to approve the payments presented in warrant number 54, 55, 56, 57. We hear a motion on bunk to take the four together. Is there a motion?
I'm with it.
Ed, is there a second?
Second.
Bob, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The matter is agreed to. We come now to the second public comment period on anything under the sun. Is there anybody cares to be heard on any subject? For an encore, here's Val.
We'll keep this brief. I wrote a letter to Kathy Loco in the fall of '21. This is regarding clearing, and this may segue into a future conversation about lot clearing. Without getting into long discussion, two of the premier precast concrete engineering companies in Albany were approved by Suffolk County and distribute this to the board, like to see for septic system which can be driven on top of. So I think the biggest thing in this village is the fact that our street side setback from the curb to the front of the house is very limited room in terms of installing these systems, which are countrywide and. So the intention of reaching out was to see, can something be done to eliminate any for a covenant? So these two engineers, you have their letters from the county, give state approval. So that means every single mandated IA septic system can go directly to the driveway. Maybe to cut trees in this.
This is a village, yeah.
Yeah. If you look, the last page of this is just a quick illustration. This is the type of damage which is going to your front yard, to side yard, in a village where we have 10,000 square foot properties on average. So with the ARB or the arbiter of where a tree might be saved, this gives them ability with an applicant to say, move the septic system to the default location, which is the driveway. No harm, no trees taken down.
That's right.
And the fact the matter that these systems can get within two foot of a sidewalk, which could damage a village's tree. Village tree fine in other villages, $10,000 if you touch and cut down the village's tree. And here we've got a code where we can use this with Harbor Committee, Architectural Review Board, and possibly zoning board, you've got an opportunity for the board to comment in a meaningful way to say, look, there are beautiful trees, these properties, can you please put this in the driveway? And it's permissible. So that's what you see with these letters, and they were issued in January of 2023. And so it's, it's a tool for, that's all.
How can we get this to the various boards? So this is just sent to them all?
Well.
Yeah.
Lurgics, yes.
Yeah.
Well, future discussion, because if the ARB board is the arbiter of where a tree may need to be saved, you've given them an opportunity to say, look, there's three or four beautiful trees, for example. Can we keep them, I'm moving the septic to a benign location, or it's actually no harm? And here you have it, no need for a covenant, no need for special permission, it's done. These cast concrete covers are 10-inch thick. They can support a concrete truck, a fire truck, any kind of delivery truck. Where the septic system itself is made from plastic, which is why they typically, you can't go anywhere near them. So this gives a lot of latitude to the shore and speaks into the clearing issues. That's fine.
Thanks again.
All right, thank you, Val. Yes, hello, there she is. How are you? Up, we can't hear you.
Hi, hi, everyone.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Your name and address?
Eileen Rosenberg, 10 Carver Street and 26 Lighthouse Lane. I'm sure I speak for Jane when I say that we're pleased that there's some momentum on the clearing legislation. Given that Jane and I have more or less spearheaded this effort for eight years, I'm wondering if you could please share with us Ed Hollander's letter?
Sure, yes.
Okay. I think you have both Jane and our contact information, correct?
We can, we know how to find you, yes.
Yes, okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Happy to do it, Eileen, thank you.
All right.
Anything, anyone else to be heard in the public session? Hearing none. I would hear a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, sir, come up, I'm sorry.
Mayor Trustees, good evening, thanks for the chance to speak with you tonight. I wish to.
Tell us who you are, I'm sorry, for the record.
Rob.
Rob, of course.
Laura Lane. I wish to encourage you to consider the purchase of the Morrison Street properties for use as a publicly accessible landscape. Admittedly, this is a difficult assignment, but in my estimation, it will be worth the time and resources to assess the conditions and the means necessary for acquisition, and is favorable to pursue it vigorously. Events of the last year convince me that the best outcome for the land involves a public purpose. And the path to arrive at the preferred purpose involves this board. I don't disparage Mr. Tronzo or his property rights, but there isn't a satisfactory way to integrate live lot development into a historic history that is characterized by narrow lots. Moreover, our public schools have twice failed to make a convincing case for its ownership. The current state of the Morrison property is frankly unfortunate, but not a rare situation. There are areas in this village, in fact, near the water, that long ago were filled in to create development opportunities. But doing so brought about some disruptive and destructive consequences that we face today, mainly impacts to private property, public infrastructure, and economic and environmental systems. Morrison is a part of our land use legacy. We have long ago expected land to meet our needs without sufficiently understanding how it and related natural systems support our health and sustain all life on the east end. Morrison is such an example, especially for the large movement of water or its hydrology and the larger area it supports. The important point is this, from our hands come our most persistent headaches. And therefore, our involvement is required at times to intervene and to correct, to prevent and to restore, and so achieve significant public benefits that otherwise would not occur. This is the case now, and this body need be involved. And there are many, many in this community who will step forward and help shoulder this challenge. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Rob, as always.
I have a precious toe.
So you're visiting the country, are you? Welcome home.
Thank you very much. My name is Ken Dorf, and as some of you know, my spouse, Stuart Lowery, was one of the masterminds of the CPF Reservation Fund back in the 1990s. I've been delighted to see how much property the fund has preserved and acquired in the past 25 years, including land next to us and across Musson Road. But we're also aware that by their nature, the funds have mainly gone to large tracts of rural lands, and then, until recently, not into the centers. So Sag Harbor Village has received disproportionately less funds than other places for the CPF funds. The Morrison properties are an excellent example of what the CPF funds are set up for, preserving a little green space we have left. I urged the village to buy the property in November of 2021. I respectfully requesting the same. Now, the property is a natural sum and remains a seasonal wetland. In 2009, we walked into the property. My daughter Leila and I found an eastern state for toad, which only exists in seasonal wetlands. At the same time, as you all probably know, it was severely damaged by dumping by this owner, so it is not pristine. However, it's critical and central location that it lends itself perfectly to a wide green space, especially given it's proximity to the school. I am confident that Southampton Town would look kindly on a CPF purchase, that's hoping. Especially since it was willing to use CPF funds to purchase the same property with the school. I hope they would all use our imaginations in a collaborative effort, including with the school and others in the area, to consider the best use of the property. I can imagine outdoor classrooms, formal playing field, a demonstration wetland, or some combination. Our imaginations are the limit. On a related issue, you likely know that a main reason for the failure of this proposal was the initial plan of a large plastic field, a huge parking lot. We desperately need a strategy to make it safer for kids to walk and bike to school, and to consider parking only as part of a broader traffic solution. Still today, neither school has a sidewalk, certain navigating app, something that shocked me when I moved here almost 30 years ago. And there has never been a plan since the failed CPF school proposal in 2009 to make the domain order safer. I am very optimistic about this going forward. Honestly, I respect and know all of you, and I think it's a great board. And I hope that you will resuscitate the transportation committee and work closely with the school to rethink how kids and their parents come to interact with their park. A giant parking lot is not the solution. We don't want to be Melville. That we neither want. You have so many other ideas from breaking the curve at Suffolk, and we talked about that 10 years ago, to the Green Cross work about eight years ago, to the schools addressing this in the sidewalk, that's about six years ago, never materialized. It is time to break the impacts. The opposition to the parking lot and ongoing concern about the board and the amendment to the Cheshire Park give us reason to do that. I look forward to working with you. Thanks.
Ken, if I might, just, you began, you said, for the village to buy the property.
With CPF funds.
Okay, what I've heard in some of the other advocacy is just a clear understanding that under CPF, there's a willing seller must be involved, that's the owner of the property. And the CPF administered by the town, in this case, the Southampton side of town, or the East Hampton and other cases, is the, is the buyer. And very often, a willing seller will identify in their formal letter the further purpose for which they're being prepared to sell. That was the case with Steinbeck Park. The owner offered to sell it to the town for further transfer to the village. So the village is not in a position to be buying 10 and $12 million properties.
I understand, but let me clarify, to talk to the city about trying to expand our works. I understand the village proposes. It's, it's the, it's the municipality that proposes, and then seeks funding from Southampton to town, and it could be partial purchases, the school is hoping to do. But the town has the main supplier.
No, the, the proposer, as a matter of the legal setup, is the willing seller, is willing to sell. The, the process is triggered by a form, a willing seller letter, that must come from the current owner of the property. It can, you can get to the same. It can, you can get to the same place. I just want to clarify that the village itself is not the purchaser. It's the ultimate beneficiary if it all works.
Right.
But it's town money, and there's plenty of it right now.
Well, then how would we?
The CPF committee also identifies properties.
Square.
The CPF committee itself to the town board.
Okay, is it, this is my understanding that the, that the properties are not necessarily identified by CPF for the town, that.
They are, there's a chart, there's actually a map.
Yeah, I know, I know that, I've worked with these properties, but the people will come, people or municipalities or other entities will come to the CPF fund in the town and say, we recommend this property. And then they'll look at it and say, look, for example, it's happening with Steinbeck. The, the town didn't come to the village for Steinbeck, correct? Was the village just like you? Was it not?
We went with the owner.
Yes.
But the owner was the applicant, is the only point I'm making, that the village is not the purchaser.
Well, in the case of the school, did Tronzo approach the CPF funds with how that worked?
I have no idea, I have no idea how that.
That's what I understand is when, when, why would he give a willing seller the school for CPF funds, they're not.
I don't know.
I, I, I think we should ask.
Anyway, I'm just, I think, what I've getting picking up from reactions to people, when they hear the village should buy the property, just I have felt the need to be clear, we don't have the money to buy the property. We can work with.
Another question.
Yeah. Yeah.
We can be encouraging about.
Yeah, you can do that, you can work with a willing seller, but ultimately, we're not the purchaser, smiling point.
Can the village go to Southampton Town and say, we have a property we'd like to look at, because we would like to get involved in this? Please purchase it.
Sure, we have those kind of conversations, but then the, the CPF staff and board can approach an owner and invite that owner to be a willing seller. But nothing happens if the property owner is not a willing seller, it's not eminent domain, it's not condemnation. You have to have a willing seller.
Correct, and we know this is a willing seller because they're willing to sell to CPF for the school, we know that, correct?
Apparently, I don't know.
Also, I think there were some tax implications for selling to school districts.
In any case, if the village, let me put it this way, if the village were to decide that Morrison becomes a green space and that the CPF funds, which are overflowing and have been little used in Sag Harbor, were appropriate use for it, how would you trigger that?
How would we?
Trigger it.
I think those of you who are advocating should talk with the owner about his willingness to be a willing seller for that purpose.
Not the town.
You could also talk to a CPF, they can identify as a property.
You can do all of the above, sure.
So the village has no role?
Well, usually, the village has a role if it becomes a park and a town doesn't want to manage the park located in the village. Then they do an intermunicipal agreement to manage the park, but it's pretty limited, that's the role. An IMI, it's an intermunicipal agreement, like that's what happened with Steinbeck Park. The CPF purchased it and the town of Southampton asked for an intermunicipal agreement so that the town, although it could purchase it, the village would be required to improve it, maintain it, and pay for it.
Right, well, 10%, of us to be put aside for.
Because it's located in the village, that was the agreement.
Let me just clarify for Steinbeck and for the cinema. I, I can't imagine that out of the blue, the owners came to the village to say, we had this idea. There must have been discussions that were launched by the village, is that not correct?
Well, there's two entirely different stories there. But in what Liz just described is ultimately the arrangement for Steinbeck Park was that the town retained the fee simple ownership of Steinbeck Park, and we are a licensee in perpetuity, but we're not the fee holder.
Correct.
That, it's a long story in its own right. So the cinema was one of the most artful because they actually created two environmental easements. A facade easement associated with the facade of the building.
Right.
Has nothing to do with open space or any of these other values. So in that case, I believe the cinema approached CPF.
So in other words, in those two cases, the village had nothing to do with it, they were simply a passive observer, is that what you're saying?
Well, no, even in the cinema.
Either the cases.
Well, we certainly, in Steinbeck Park, we were certainly there from the beginning, yes.
So could you not be there from the beginning of Morrison?
But not to buy it, that's my point.
Again, I understand CPF purchase, I understand that. But by analogy, with the Steinbeck, the village could propose, push, have conversations, etc.
Okay, I'm going to do that, my first official act in retirement. I share a fence line with the Oppenheimers, so I was recused from any involvement in this, and I'm happy to pass it over to this very good looking fellow. I'd like to help you, but I'm recused and I'm retired.
What's there, what else I just proposed, if you guys get involved, do you want it to happen? Do you really want to see?
I would like to see something happen there that would preserve the land, but I think when it comes to the process, I don't believe it's appropriate for the village to be part of the moving of that process. If you as advocates for this talk to the owner, or even talk to CPF, because they identify properties that they express an interest in, we get, we get notifications from CPF from time to time asking us if we would be interested if this, you know, in supporting this. And I for one would be interested, and so I can't speak obviously for anybody else. But I don't think you could, I don't feel that it should be initiated by the board. We can certainly help, in the long run, we will be involved in the management of the land. And that's, as, as Mayor said, that's where the village comes in. But for us to go to Mr. Tronzo or to go to the town of Southampton, I believe is inappropriate for us to do that as, as a board of trustees. But it's not saying that it can't be done, I mean, it's, you could, you could do it, you could go to CPF and, you know, and then CPF would reach out to us and we would express our support for that.
And would you be interested?
Well, that's another question, I think.
I mean, people don't want to waste their time.
I would be, I would be interested in pursuing that conversation. I don't think we can do that right now.
I would say, yeah, I would say that, that I, I know for a fact that the process with the school and the CPF and the property owner has not been completely exhausted. So we're waiting to see where this is going to go. So when, there, there will come a time, I think, when the village is going to have to make a decision of how we're going to participate in that.
There's also a filed valid approved by this village's planning board subdivision map of this property. So there are filed, there's a filed subdivision map, these are buildable lots, these are.
Right.
These are house lots approved by this village's planning board, sorry.
You can call Tronzo, ask him first, cut to the chase, find out if he's even interested. Sure he'll feel.
He was here, he was here tonight.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Exactly.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll do that, and we'll look forward to talking.
Thank you, Ken, thank you, Ken. Is there anybody else?
Yes.
Yes. There she is, how are you?
Thank you, Susan Sproth, thank you, Mayor, and thank you trustees for always offering this public community to speak about our place. Many of us have expressed our passions about Morrison. And all of us imagine many ways we can enjoy this green space in the heart of our village. At this particular time, with, we're also aware of our environment and our responsibilities to be good stewards of our natural resources. I would hope that this board, representing all of our community, would support and join with us in finding a solution that can maintain our natural environment and provide a native program, a wildlife program, a nature program for our students. I think if you feel engaged in any way about this situation, about this property, it has such enormous opportunity for all of us to benefit from it, including our schools and our school children. I personally would rather see it become something bigger than one or two small fields. I'd rather see it maximized in terms of what it really stands for and what it is. I'm so moved by the people who've spoken in the past about growing up here and their experiences and what they did when they were in school there. It just resonates to me. And I've lived here for now, I guess, over 30 years, about a block away. You know, I don't touch Morrison, but I, you know, my dear come from Morrison. And I, I just, I connected with this. And I connected with the people who were already connected with this. And none of us are coming to wanting or asking you to solve this, but we are asking for your consideration about how this can become a better part of Sag Harbor, you know, rather than what we've all known it as. I mean, way back when I started working here, I remember seeing Mr. Tronzo coming into my office showing his division, and you know, God knows, that was probably 30 years ago. And here we are. And I do know and understand and appreciate that the CPF requires a ready, willing, and able seller. Well, he is a ready, willing, and able seller, and he will sell it to whoever gives him the right number. And I want that to be this community, I want that to be all of us. And I do feel that, that we can sit down and solve this. And you've heard and seen people who have been going door to door, who are dedicated not to ruling people out, but to making it the best possibility for all of us. And you have the wisdom that some of us don't have. And we would welcome your guidance and, and your support and help in this. I'll go to anybody.
Susan, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Well, thank you all, and I would hear a motion then to adjourn.
I would like to just take a moment, if I could, Mr. Mayor, to thank you personally for your two years of service to the village, not only to your service to the village, but to the service to the state and to this nation. We might have had our disputes and we might not always agree, but there's one thing that's undisputable, and that's that Jim Baraka is a patriot, thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
We still need a motion. And a motion.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned, thank you very much.